Good evening and welcome to the May 28th, 2024 Foxborough School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We are going to start off our evening with open public comment. And I don't believe there is any over there. No one's signed up at this moment. So we're going to move right along to the approval of minutes.
Okay.
So we have the minutes in our packet. Oh, they're out of order, sorry. Anyone have any comments or questions on the minutes?
I did not.
I did not.
I apologize, I don't see them in the packet here. Are we, we have no minutes for this meeting?
No.
Okay, we have no, we actually have no minutes. So we're going to move on to our very exciting teaching and learning highlight. So we have the Borough Buddy Up program here tonight. Dr. Burtis, if you'd like to introduce this group.
I would, Mr. Worth, come right up and whoever's going to join you at the guest table. Really excited about this teaching and learning highlight. And I think that you're going to be really excited when you hear about it too. And with our students and what they have to share with you. So, Mr. Worth, I don't know who's going to join you at the guest table?
Sure, so Mrs. Fuller and Mrs. Meirhead will join me. And then, and then we'll have our students come up after, we'll kind of step down.
Hi, good evening, school committee members. Thank you so much always for, for listening to us speak about our wonderful school. I always appreciate the opportunity to share some of our proudest moments at the Borough. Tonight, we're going to share with you about our Buddy Up program. This is the first year that we are implementing this program into the school. Although it's not the first year that the program has existed in the district. So if it sounds familiar, it should, but it's new for us at the Borough School. And it is a part of our Unified Sports Initiative and, and Special Olympics in Unified Sports in the district. So what is Buddy Up? Buddy Up is a program that reaches out to fourth grade students. Buddies develop and maintain meaningful, genuine, and reciprocal connections with students who are attending the Special Olympics. So it's just for fourth grade students this year. They build these relationships with their peer athletes throughout their year in fourth grade. Students are selected. This year, we had over 20 students selected out of our fourth grade, out of our 43, I'm sorry, 46 fourth graders. They, they accompany their buddies on the day of the Special Olympics, but it really is so much more than just a one-day event. It's an all-year team-building and, and support system that's built throughout the year. They show their support and encouragement by participating in the events at the Special Olympics. Buddies participate in adaptive and physical education one time per cycle, once every six days. Students have lunch with their buddies once a month. This is scheduled activities. Buddies participate in morning meetings once a month before school to practice their leadership and plan. These are really the minimal events that are happening throughout the month with students. What we experienced this year was we kind of set, set up the year to have these things happening throughout each month and throughout each cycle. But what we saw is that students on both ends, both the buddies and the fourth grade students, both the students participating in the Special Olympics and their fourth grade buddies, they were craving more time with each other throughout the year. So they just dropped in. It was very casual. The picture that you can see here is some of our buddies, some of our buddies that we have here tonight with us, just joining in, in a classroom to join, join with the, the students participating in the Special Olympics. It really ended up being a very strong team-building activity throughout the year. It ended up being a wonderful way for some of our younger students to connect with our older students, for our older students to demonstrate their leadership. And it was really hands-off from an adult's point of view, although all the behinds, behind-the-scenes work was done by Mrs. Fuller and Mrs. Meirhead and Mrs. Colleen Foley, who can't join us this evening, she's on maternity leave, but she really did so much work behind the scenes preparing for this. But day-to-day, it was pretty hands-off and, like I said, it was pretty casual. Students were really free to interact as much as they wanted, classroom to classroom, if you want to jump in and say anything.
So this was, you know, it's the first year at the Borough, but this was very new for me, and I am just so thankful and blessed that I did it because of these guys. They were top-notch and an inspiration. They gave up recesses to go be with their buddies. They were true leaders, and I'm just so thankful for all of them.
I just want to add that they, these fourth graders have been an amazing group of students. I mean, seeing them step up and the leadership and just, especially having participated in the Special Olympics for the first time myself this year, seeing how genuine their relationships were and how they were looking out for their buddies if their buddies should stray, kind of redirect them positively and just, it was just such a nice relationship to see all of these kiddos. These kids are always special to me because these are our hybrid kiddos that we had. So we had them for half the year, but it was just such a crazy year that, and to see how much they have blossomed and grown is just amazing. I'm so proud of all of them.
Following the Special Olympics, I actually received an email from one of the families of a student who was participating in the Special Olympics. They wanted to tell me something that I had missed that day, which was one of our fourth grade students stepped in front of a ball and actually saved it from, from hitting one of the other students who was participating in the Special Olympics. She reached out, she was, she was very emotional about it. She said that she couldn't have imagined a closer relationship between her fourth grade stu-, between the fourth grade student and her student who was in kindergarten participating in the Special Olympics. So that, that really just kind of brought it full circle for, for us. So there was a formal structure for the morning meetings that fourth graders participated in throughout the year. In October, they participated in an initial meeting with introductions, icebreakers, students sharing ideas or wishes for the program. In November, they, they planned, they planned some downtime activities for the day of the games, and those went off flawlessly on the day of the games. January, they reviewed stations and planned for materials needed. So the students really took leadership in doing this, planning the activities, thinking about what they would need to execute those activities. In March, they worked to make friendship bracelets for their buddies, which was wonderful on the day, May 20th of the Special Olympics. They gave those friendship bracelets to their buddies. In April, they created a banner and pledge signs, which you'll see in the next slide. In May, the last-minute preparations for the Special Olympics. And then in June, we're actually having a celebration of all their hard work and leadership throughout the year. So that'll be like an after, after-school ice cream party. So these are some of the signs that they created. Pledging inclusion. Do you want to talk, I'm sorry, do you want to talk about?
The only thing I want to bring up that, it was amazing to me at Special Olympics, sometimes a student, like, they would become heightened or, you know, want to run off a bit. And as much as the adults would try to help, it didn't always work. But what I saw were, when the children, their buddies, went to support them, it's like those children just followed right along. And that was just one other thing that I found to be amazing, so.
Do you guys want to come up? You don't have to talk, there's no pressure.
Oh, I think they do.
You can come up. I know some of you have prepared.
Hi, everyone, thank you for being here.
Hi.
So why don't we start right over here? Can you tell us your name?
Sure.
And you got to talk right into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
My name is Enzo. I am in the fourth grade at the Borough. I like to work with my buddy who has special needs. I get to show him that he gets to do the same fun things that kids without special needs can do. My buddy cannot talk, but he gets excited and jumps and jumps up and down when we play gym games together. Sometimes I have to hold in his hand so he stays in class. I like being a buddy because it helps me learn about our differences and that everyone should be able to have fun in gym at school.
That's great, thank you so much for sharing. Julie, do you want to tell us your name?
My name is Miles. I like the Buddy Program because I get to do some crafts and help my buddy within like wellness and gym.
That's awesome.
My name is Nathan, and I really liked getting to know my buddy. His name was Rory, and becoming his friend, it was fun to help him at the Special Olympics. I'll really miss him next year.
Oh.
My name is James, and I liked about the Buddy Program is that I got to help out someone that wasn't like the rest of us and that had special needs.
That's awesome, James. Thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate you coming. Does anybody in the committee have anything they wanted to ask them or say?
I was at the Special Olympics that day, and I saw you guys there, and you all did an amazing job. It was such an amazing day. Everybody there did such a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. This is amazing.
For you guys, what advice would you give to kids who are a year younger than you and might be thinking about whether or not they should join this program next year?
I think that it's super special for everyone to be like a participant in everything, so I don't think it matters if you have differences or not.
What a great idea, thank you. That's amazing. Anyone else?
I just want to, so I like watching your faces in the background. Ice cream party sounds fun. Thank you guys very much. So two things. One, I hope you guys continue working with your new friends and that you continue working with the Special Olympic. It's a wonderful organization, it's a wonderful event every year, so I hope you continue that. And second, we live in a world that has a lot of cynicism, which is like negative talk and people not being very positive. But if you hear, when you hear stories like this about the stuff that you guys are doing and, and how, and how much pride you take in that and making these new friends, it wipes all that cynicism, cynicism away. So thank you guys very much. I personally had a really tough day, and this was a great way for me to end it. So personally, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for being here. I think they deserve a round of applause. Thank you all so much for coming. All right. You don't have anything else for a super, oh, oh, no, no.
Please come in.
I'm Liz Machansky. Nathan is my son, and Mrs. Meirhead asked me to just say a couple of words from a parent perspective. I can't say it better than they just did, but this program is the best thing that Nathan has ever been part of. He was so excited to join, to form a wonderful bond with his buddy whom he learned so much from. He built up his own confidence and learned that he can really make a difference in meaningful ways. And I think for the first time, he began to see himself as a leader. And I know that the lessons that he took from this program about inclusivity and friendship and just showing up for somebody, he'll take those long after he leaves the Borough. So I'm just, we're so thankful that Mr. Worth and Mrs. Meirhead and Mrs. Fuller were able to offer this program and that we could be part of it. Thank you.
That's amazing. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
I just have a, I, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, we're all getting ahead of ourselves, sorry.
I just had a few more pictures to share, really just highlighting how, you know, the fourth graders not only attended the Special Olympics, but they were right there with their buddies the whole time. Like I said, you know, formally, we, we structured it so that there were, there were times throughout the month and throughout the week where students were spending time with each other, but throughout the year, to our surprise, it really became more informal. This is a whole school assembly that our fourth graders and, and Buddy students were a part of. The, the assembly focused on neurodiversity and pledging inclusion. And some pictures from the Special Olympics.
Familiar faces.
Fantastic.
And these are some of those activities that our fourth grade leaders plans, plan the materials for, plan the activities. And that's all.
Thank you so much.
Happy to answer any questions that you might have?
Do you even have any? I think, no?
Honestly, just as you look forward, I'm assuming you want to continue doing this? And any, anything's your, yeah, are there any, any advice that the kids gave you or parents or any of the other participants that you'd like to see implemented next year?
I really think just creating more opportunities throughout the week for students to, to interact with each other in the school. I think that we didn't, we didn't necessarily anticipate that as we went into it, and we kind of created these more informal, these more formal opportunities, but really expanding it so that the kids are in charge of deciding when they want to go down to the classroom or when they want to plan activities, so.
Excellent. Well, yay, well, congratulations and thank you everyone for the effort, and it's wonderful to see. That's all I have.
It's great to see both sides, all the happy faces, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent update.
So the first thing I wanted to mention was the Special Olympics Field Day that we had, because we all got to participate in that. And also to publicly thank Colleen Foley at the Borough and then Teresa Petty at the high school for co-chairing. We met with them, and honestly, we got to sit and listen to all the plans that they had in place, and they had, you know, other people helping them along the way, but they just did an extraordinary job of planning the event. They invited the Norton Public Schools to join us this year, so we had a lot more students. And I know at the opening ceremonies, you know, we also had, you know, public safety that was there too, so we're thankful for the greater community in participating. And one of the things that Mrs. Petty had said at the end was to make sure that you don't forget your smiles. And I think that you saw Mr. Worth's pictures there, that there were smiles in every single picture, and no matter where you were, on the turf, on the track, over behind the tennis courts, there were smiles everywhere. Everyone had a great day. The buddies, our athletes, and then all those that were helping out. So just thank you to Mrs. Foley and Mrs. Petty for co-chairing the event and putting it together because it really was, it was seamless. As far as other updates, I just wanted to point out in your packet under informational matters, if you think back to our February meeting when you approved our updated policy JLCD, which was on administering medications to students, we talked about with Jen Rosenberg and the nurses and updating that guidebook, if you will, and that you had wanted to have a copy of that. So that's under informational matters in your packet, so you have a copy of that. The other thing is many events, I know we don't have Nathan here this evening, tonight's the Black and White Dance for our seniors. We have lots of events this week too with Scholarship Night, which is tomorrow night at 6:00. We have Class Night, which is Thursday night. But even tomorrow night on top of Scholarship Night for our seniors, we have the art show at the Ahern. We also have our Grade Five Band Chorus, Chorus and Orchestra Concert. And then the following night when we have Class Night, again, lots to choose from depending on where you would like to go, with our Grade Six being Chorus and Orchestra Concert and Art Show as well. And the Art Show, I really encourage people to go early before the concert and to see the artwork. Our art teachers, they just do such a fantastic job with all of our students and the artists that they produce, and you can see that artwork that's up. And then on Sunday, our seniors graduating at 2:00 at Foxborough High School in the gymnasium, so we're really looking forward to graduation. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. One other event, prom went off for the juniors.
That's right.
Without a hitch. It was a big month in, in May. Okay, well, thank you very much. If you are all set, then we will go on. Just want to note before, we, we actually will have some things we have to vote on, that the school committee's student representative report, Nathan Erman is not here with us tonight. He is at the Black and White Dance for the seniors. There is one update he just wanted to share with the community, that he had finished the Massachusetts Association of School Committees charting the course, course, which is the first of many educational enrichment that is offered by MASC. So he wanted to share that, so we'll move right along to the K-12 Wellness Curriculum Review. So see a lot of faces here for that, come on up. Just a quick reminder while everyone's sitting, they did want us to just note that, make sure you speak into your microphones, everyone can hear, especially when we're voting, if that's okay. Thank you.
So as this group gets settled, I just want to review with you what is in your packet. You have a memo tonight that outlines the work that we've done over the course of this past school year to complete a K-12 Wellness Curriculum Review. One of the, the big highlights for this review is that just this past fall, in the fall of 2023, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updated their comprehensive health and physical education frameworks for the first time since 1999. So, so that was a big focus for our curriculum review. We are going to be walking you through tonight a presentation that highlights the elements of the curriculum review report. The strongest recommendations coming out of the review are a refinement of standards-based grading practices at the elementary level, and expansion of those practices into the middle grades. And then in addition to that, we are going to ask for the school committee's vote to update our textbook. And you see the cost outlined in that memo. So now I'm going to hand it off to the committee.
Well, thank you for having us. We're very excited. So it'll be the first time I've ever done something like this in front of this crowd, so this is great. First, I just want to say, we did have, does this, how do I hit the next slide?
Point it towards the window.
We had an amazing team, and I just want to thank them publicly in front of everyone here and to the community. We were really lucky to have representation from all grade levels, all schools, all right, we even had guidance involved and administrators. And it was just a really special group of people that all showed up really ready to work and dig into it. And, you know, as a new department head, it's something I really appreciate to have the support of everybody. It means a lot. I also want to take a second to just thank Stephanie for the, for the tremendous amount of support she gave me throughout the process, just as a new, like I said, new in the position and right side by side, like my best friend in the process. So really, really appreciative of everything she did for, for us and for me, and just want to say that publicly. But as you can see, you know, we did have representation of all schools. And I'll just kind of go on from there. I don't know if I'm supposed to read everyone's name, but when I first took this position as department head, our first professional development that we had, we all met in the summer of 2022, and we wanted to simplify the vision of the department. So our biggest thing was, you know, there's a lot of language, there's a lot of frameworks. At the time, they hadn't come out with the new frameworks. And our goal was to, you know, as you can see up here, to provide personalized, relevant experiences that teach, inspire, and empower the students to be healthy and make a lifelong commitment to wellness. And we wanted it to be straightforward and easy to understand for anyone that would read that. If there was ever a substitute that had to come in for an extended period of time, we wanted them to be aware of what our vision was. We wanted all levels to understand the vision, all be working towards the same thing. And that's, that was done through a pretty significantly long process of getting everyone's feedback and really breaking it down and sometimes going through the grammar and making sure we hit everything perfectly, but hopefully it's right up there. If Shannon was here, she would have something to say maybe, but biggest things were, like I said, teach, inspire, and empower. Sorry. Okay. One of the things that we noticed is that we have a very strong wellness department. And one of the things is we're very grateful for the commitment that the town has given to wellness, the amount of kids in high school that have to take wellness, you know, for six sections throughout high school. It's not something that you can get a waiver for, it's not something that we excuse for the smallest thing here or there. It's every kid is getting that experience throughout their high school career. You know, two semesters of health, six semesters of PE, it's really, really great, and it gives us an opportunity. You know, when I first started teaching, I said I wanted to teach life class, and I think that health is a, health and PE are both like life-type classes, that you can really dig into what's going on in the day-to-day of a student, and you can really be supportive of what they bring to the classroom with them and the experiences they have outside of the classroom. And we have a great opportunity to support them through their day-to-day lives as well as their academic lives. But some of the great things that we wanted to highlight, I mean, we, we just got a new wellness center at the high school, an updated wellness center from the initial donation that we got years back, which included, you know, 11 pieces of cardio equipment, new, new weight racks, new Nautilus equipment, so it's new dumbbells, new barbells, everything that you can imagine. It, it looks like you'd go to a local YMCA or, you know, a fitness center or, and you'll have all those, you'll have the opportunity to see what that's like, and we're really, really proud of that. We also have a lot of school-wide events, specifically, you know, I'll speak towards the high school. We have our Badminton Tournament is one of our most popular units of, of the whole year, brings the whole school together. You can see some photos up there of our final from this year, and we're supported again by our administrators at the high school to give us a class period at the end that brings everyone down to celebrate what we're doing over that, that unit. And the kids get very competitive, there's a plaque in the gym, you know, Coach Gibbs always talks about, you know, you can live in Foxborough, you know, your memory will be there forever.
Immortality.
In Foxborough, immortality. Sorry, immortality, I apologize. You know, we also have the Heinricha Hustle Race, which is a walk-run that's honoring Joe Heinricha's passing from a long time, who was a great friend of ours, also a former teacher in our department. And just like I said, a really great mentor, and we wanted to find a way to honor him each year. So that event raises money to now funds the scholarship for Joe Heinricha Memorial Scholarship, but also funds projects within the school that are student-driven, student-led. If they have an idea and they need money for a project, they can just, you know, write us an application, tell us what it's about, and we've, we've never denied anyone's. So if you're listening and if you're watching this as any kid that's out there for you. And we also supported the Special Olympics Day today by, by purchasing t-shirts and helping that event as well. So it's, it's a really great fundraiser, it's a really great, another way that we bring the school together. I, I don't want to go through all of our stuff here, but I am really proud of things like our Senior Safe Choice Day. That is something that's been going on for a while now, and it's, it's an opportunity for all the seniors to have an experience that's peer-led. We bring in speakers from the outside, talking about all sorts of things, you know, ranging from healthy relationships to safety, personal safety, first aid. The biggest one is our healthy relationships, and the kids lead that, so we pick junior leaders each year that go ahead and lead all the discussion groups. So it's peer-on-peer leadership, and, and they, they meet in circles, they go in our media center, and we train the juniors, and then they go and they present to the class. We watch a movie about an unhealthy relationship and talk about red flags of unhealthy relationships as they head into their careers after high school or their college, or whatever they decide to do. And we as teachers kind of monitor and make sure it stays on track, but we don't get in there, we're not sitting in the circles with them, and, and we find those conversations to be really genuine and great. I think the kids have gotten a lot out of that. I'm going to let Mike and Elise actually highlight a couple of the elementary stuff, since they're here tonight, I don't want to be on speaking, so.
Okay. We do a lot of school-wide events as well at the elementary school. We do a jump-off and a hula, hula hoop event at the Taylor School and the Borough, in the Igoe School, that's something that we want to extend to the Borough School as well. We do a Dance Around the World Assembly where students in grades K through four all learn a different cultural dance from around the world, so that really expands their idea of the world. And we also have an MVP and Golden Sneaker Recognition Program, so this goes to a student at the end of every class for showing wellness core values, so respect, responsibility, compassion, integrity, perseverance, and we contact their parents, we take their picture, put them on Well of Fame, so just raising them to be good humans. And Mike does a lot of all-school assemblies as well that I'm sure he would like to touch on.
Since I've been here in Foxborough 12 years, I can tell you my experience that our wellness teachers are the biggest champions of the social, emotional, and physical well-being of our students, and I know it's across the district, and as CJ was saying, it's just, it's a remarkable group, you know, to be able to sort of see their positivity, their energy, their creativeness. And at the elementary level, you know, Danielle, Robert, and I, we try to share ideas, but each school's a little bit unique. Robert had shared the neurodiversity, the Special Olympics and inclusiveness. Danielle shared a couple of ideas that she has, our assemblies where they talk about empathy and compassion. We all talk about perseverance. A big assembly that lasts throughout the year is kindness. At the Taylor School, we spiral through that, and we really try to find just opportunities to have the children have more connections, not just in the classroom and wellness in their, in their homerooms, but also in these whole-school assemblies. It's the same message at the same time, and it's really about celebrating. You know, this year, one, one assembly that really, I was proud of our first graders, they taught us about inner coach versus inner critic, and it's something that, you know, it's amazing to see, and at the elementary level, what makes me so proud is our kindergarten students, you saw the fourth grade leaders, they can do it all, you know, if you just give a child an opportunity. So at the elementary level, there's just a few of the highlights that we have. We'll pass it off to the middle school. We'll pass it off to the middle school.
Yeah, the middle school, we do a couple of things. So we just started this year with our middle school pickleball tournament, which the kids really seem to enjoy. We kind of test ran it through the eighth grade, and we're kind of looking to kind of upgrade that next year and hopefully create a whole-school-wide pickleball tournament. And it kind of taters off of the high school. They do badminton up there, so we kind of start with pickleball. And then we also have a few whole-school assemblies. One of our big ones for Unified Sports is Unified Basketball in the winter, and the kids come out, they play a little bit, we get some of their buddies to come and help, kind of similar to the buddy program with the elementary. The unified programs have some buddies as well. So that's a little bit from the middle school.
And we also have a warrior teammate program, similar to the buddy program as well, that Mrs. Petty teaches in the beginning of the day, that's very similar in scope to the Buddy Up program. And just some other cool highlights, I think, are, you know, all of our sophomores have the opportunity to be certified in CPR through our health classes. We also, you know, like I said, I don't want to read all of them, but we do have some cool electives as well that have recently been designed, you know, sports in society, sports media, yoga classes for some different alternative types of PE as you get older. Maybe you want something non-traditional. We have yoga, we have had strength training in the past, currently not on our schedule, but something that is something we're looking into expanding upon possibly in the future. So just a really, a really good kind of mix of cool things that we do, I think, and there's more to tell, but we'll kind of move on from here. Our frameworks, like Stephanie said, it's been a long time. You know, it's been a long time since we got an updated set of frameworks, and we're excited for it, you know? And because it was so long, we didn't have time to wait for them. You know, it was like every year, they'd be like, oh, there's going to be a new framework, there's going to be a new framework. Oh, there's rumors of frameworks, and everyone was talking about them, getting them, and it was just going through this long, drawn-out process that just never seemed to come to fruition. And so in, in spite of that, we know, as a department, and this goes back to, you know, Janelle Erskine before here as well, who was our previous department head, and all of us working together as a unit, I think we've made a lot of the changes preemptively. Before, we had to wait to be told to make some of these changes that have been going on, that have been suggested now. So when you look at our suggestions tonight, and when we looked at, you know, we took that big deep dive into the frameworks as a whole department, went line by line of every framework and said, hey, how are we doing on this one? How are we doing with this one? You know, anywhere from emerging and beginning to advanced and something that we'd be happy to share with other districts. You know, it was, it was, it was a broad spectrum of things. You know, we were good at some things, we were not so great at other things, but like I said, I think we did a really good job of making these changes before this end. So you're not going to see a huge overhaul to our program now that these frameworks have come out. I think we've made some really good adjustments. What you will see, as, and if you've looked at the frameworks at all, is that there are some new kind of ways that they organize it. You know, one thing I think that's a real big focus is the practices, which we'll get into in a second. But again, going back to kind of lining right along with our vision of empowering the students with skills that they can use in their personal lives, you know, not something that is a memorization or a checkbox of vocabulary, but really, you know, we tell our kids, I know all the teachers in their health classes say this to the kids, I've watched them say it, I've said it myself, is that the real test for us is not, we're never going to be there to grade your real test. You know, it's, you're going to have something, you're going to have a situation in your life, and you're going to have to make the right decision at the right time. And we're not going to be there with our textbook to tell you, you know, I should have been on this way, you should have done it that way. We're going to prepare you that those situations exist. These are situations you will experience in your life, whether you like it or not at times, and how are you going to handle it? You know, the old Boy Scouts, be prepared, know what you would do in that moment. We found is, especially at the high school level, which, you know, I'm obviously more familiar with, is, you know, if you're not prepared to make a decision in a situation, that's usually when you make a bad decision. You know, if you haven't thought about what you would do in this moment, you know, someone offers you a ride home and you're not, you don't, you're worried about getting in trouble, if you haven't talked that situation out at home, if you haven't thought about who you would call, where you would go, you're more likely to make a bad decision. And our job, we feel, is to try to put them in the situation to make those decisions, or at least contemplate those decisions and where they would go. And then, you know, we've all probably had this, hopefully we've all had this conversation with our parents of, you know, we're not going to be mad at you tonight, we'll talk about it, we'll come pick you up, whatever the situation is, and we can deal with the consequences the next day or down the road. But we want to develop that communication between the kids and their parents as well. So I think that's a really important part of what we do in our program. As we get into, like I said, as we look at the new frameworks, they're graded in multi-level standards, so we wouldn't say, hey, at the end of grade three, you might have to know X. It's more of that band of, you know, K to two, grades three to four, by the end of grade two, you will learn this, by the end of grade five, by the end of grade eight. And the biggest thing is, you know, it's, it's, the frameworks are more inclusive, they're medically accurate, you know, and it says development and age-appropriate. You know, we, we find that the way it breaks down by the levels that we've discussed puts it at a very appropriate level for whether it's elementary, middle school, and what topics are being addressed at those levels. And it's, you know, it's, it's very empowering to look at this and see, like I said, that we've kind of hit these practices as things that we've been focusing on. And as I slide here to the next slide, these are the seven practices that they've come up with, you know, decision-making and problem-solving, and this is something that's almost an everyday topic in our health classes. And I know with the elementary school, you know, self-management, goal-setting, awareness, these communication skills, these are things that are happening every minute probably in the classes of our elementary. I'm so, so impressed with the elementary staff and the way they handle their rooms, the command they have over the classroom, the respect they have from the students, they're just such an impressive group of people. And they're right, they always bring new ideas to the table. You know, we didn't mention the yoga mindfulness at the end of class, but just that calm-down two minutes that I think a lot of teachers appreciate. They get all jacked up and wild, and they're sweating, they take that two-minute cooldown, they put on some light music, everyone breathes a little bit, and then the teachers meet them in the line. And I think a lot of the classroom teachers really appreciate that, that mindfulness moment. But, but as you can see, you know, there are seven big things. I mean, movement skills jumps out there obviously as more of a physical education stuff, but all of these things are being hit in all of our classes, you know, one way or another. I believe, turn over to Stephanie at this point.
So I'll just jump in for a moment and explain the curriculum review process. We do have a consistent curriculum review process that we have all of our content areas walk through throughout the course of the year. It does begin with an equity assessment. That's something that we put into place during the 22, 23 school year. From that equity assessment, we're developing or identifying areas of strength and opportunities for growth. And those opportunities for growth that are identified through the equity assessment end up driving the entirety of that curriculum review year. It's, it's how we develop the focus questions and how we identify, what are we going to research, what surveys are we going to develop so that we can better understand maybe what some of our neighboring districts are doing to address some of the curriculum standards? And then also, you know, what, what are the curriculum resources that are out there that are better aligned to the new frameworks that can help us get better at what we do? So again, the equity assessment, it was developed from the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium's Equity Audit. It's not a full equity audit. It's something that we've pared down significantly so that it fits within our curriculum review process. It does look at four different categories: standards and curriculum development, academic placement and tracking, opportunities, access to course opportunities, instructional strategies, and curriculum strategies. So for example, the equity assessment might ask something like, do all students have equitable access to course opportunities throughout their K-12 wellness program experience? So that was a question that we asked at the beginning of the year and use that to identify, are there any adjustments that we need to make to our program in order to make sure that all of our students have equitable access to their curriculum?
So some of the areas that, you know, came out of this, this assessment is that some of our strengths, you know, we're very, I guess, we had already mentioned here is that many of our materials have already become more culturally responsive. So we're really proud of the work that we do to include all people in all of our classes. You know, there is no, only this type of person is represented in our class materials. You know, we've gone to removing labels and different things that would make you think one thing is, or the other. You know, it's very, very generic on purpose. The curriculum is accessible, okay? As Stephanie just mentioned, it's very accessible and prepares the world, the students for a diverse society. The students are, the classes are mixed, they're heterogeneous class groupings, as well as, like I said, we have a variety of different assessments and some of these whole-school assemblies that we've already mentioned that I don't need to kind of go into again. But some of our growth opportunities that were targeted was our textbooks were old. You know, we had some older textbooks that just needed some new materials and some new inserts and some different units that weren't really included. And if you look back, I mean, I'm not pretty sure social media didn't even exist back when the frameworks were last given out. So we're looking at a situation where we have to create new units, and that's really where some of this stuff came out. The need for, you know, delivering, getting these new topics to the students, vaping, digital literacy and safety, obviously, social media and just phone use in general. You know, we're seeing that creep all the way into our elementary schools now. As sad as that is for me, as Dr. Burdos knows how I feel about that, the more the phone comes involved, you know, the worse, but we'll leave that alone for tonight. And then, you know, we think that there's, what we've, what we've seen here is, we want to deliver that, that elementary health in a way that doesn't take away physical activity. So that is done through a lot of the school-wide assemblies that you've heard about today, but we're looking for ways to be even more creative to get, you know, to not take away from time where they're exercising and they're moving, because they enjoy it so much, and it really is a good program, that we need to find ways to get this information to them in other avenues. So that's, that's a big thing for us. And then the adaptive PE program, we'd like to expand, you know, things like the Buddy Up program into the Ahearn and really build a kind of a warrior teammate class in our middle school as well, to kind of keep that all the way through, all right, and get a little consistency through the entire, the entire program. Oh, sorry, John.
So as we went through the equity assessment and started to organize everything together, we basically came up with three major buckets or three major categories that everything was going into. So those, those categories were alignment to the curriculum, education resources, and then instruction and the student experience. So again, goes without saying that as we took that deep dive into the new frameworks, we were also looking at our curriculum and, you know, seeing where we were already covering things, and then also what we needed to add, where the gaps were, maybe things that we were doing but needed to modify or tweak them slightly. So, you know, just, just identifying those gaps and what maybe needed to be added or modified within the curriculum. Education resources, as CJ already talked about, health is a really bad content area to have outdated resources, just because things are constantly changing, constantly evolving in society and in just the modern landscape, and with that, the needs of the students are changing. So that became very apparent that we wanted to have updated resources, including textbooks. And then instruction and the student experience, again, just making sure that our curriculum and our instruction was accessible for all, equitable for all, so that all students had the opportunity to build the lifelong wellness habits that we hope that they can build. And that goes not only for inside our classrooms, but also outside the classroom as well with all those things that were on that earlier slide that we're doing, you know, schoolwide or in the community, that we hope sort of add to or enrich the student experience as it pertains to wellness. We want to make sure that that's all accessible for everyone to be able to build those habits.
So we met, as an elementary and middle school staff, we met to go over standards-based report cards in the elementary and middle school to kind of provide some clarity, some consistency to what's going on, so kids can understand what they're being graded on in our classrooms. You know, oftentimes, you know, you see your grade, PEA, PEB, and it's, what does that mean? What does that mean, but what am I doing, what can I do better? And we really wanted to focus on, you know, asset-based language, things where people can talk about what they can do, what they need to be focusing on, and what are the skills we're looking for, not just, you know, you're one of the, you're, if you're, you know, basically, if you're a varsity athlete, that doesn't necessarily mean you're one of our best FZ students. You know, we've had the spectrum run all the way through, where some of the worst athletes in the school are our best PE students. And this, there's one volleyball classroom I always talk about during our volleyball unit that I had maybe 10, 12 years ago, were probably the worst athletes I've ever had as a wellness teacher. And I talk about them at every volleyball unit, about how much fun you can have just by trying, just by giving intensity, just by clapping it up and being positive. That's where you turn, you know, a student who says they don't like sports into someone who's going to go and play in that beach volleyball game at the cookout. Or, and that's really kind of what drives our program, is we want you in that game. You know, we want you to walk into a wellness center and have it not be the first time when you're intimidated and you're scared. Say, oh, it's just like gym class, you know, we went in there, we did our, you know, we had our workouts that we designed, we had our stuff we've gone in our fitness units, and I'm very comfortable. So with that being said, I, you know, Elise and Scott are going to talk about what they, how they developed their standards and, you know, what they thought about those things.
So as you can see, we split our standards up into three different standards. We now included that social, emotional piece as well, because that is so important these days. We changed the wording for each standard to start with an ICANN statement, like CJ stated. That way, it's a little more clear on what we are assessing and what we want our students to accomplish. And you'll also notice that there is a flow between elementary and middle school now, that we were all on the same page, and as students grow and get older, they're still reaching those same goals as they move forward.
Right, and as Elise said, so we kind of made it so it would be a nice transition from the elementary schools into our middle school. So the three categories, you know, physical, fitness, and health, social, emotional, and effort. So it's really, are the students understanding the wellness concepts, kind of as CJ talked about, like, you know, some kids might not be the best at throwing a football or playing in the game, but as long as they're, you know, giving their best effort, that's what we're really looking for. And how they're going to be a good teammate, how they support their peers, how they're respectful in the classroom. And that's kind of how we really grade them down there. So effort, I really think, is a life skill, and being your best self, right, doesn't take any individual skill, so.
As you can see, a lot of them fit right into the teach, inspire, and power of, we're going to teach you the skills that you can use in these events, we're going to inspire you to give your best effort, and then hopefully those skills will empower you to be involved as you, as you go through high school, you go through elementary school, middle school, and then beyond, hopefully. That's, that's the true goal.
So based on the identified opportunities for growth, we developed some survey questions that we actually pushed out to districts across Massachusetts. We did have about 14 survey respondents, which is fairly consistent with previous surveys that, that we've distributed across the state. We were looking at things like, how much time is dedicated to health education at the elementary level? What are some of the curriculum and textbook resources that other districts are using that we might want to take a look at as we begin to update our textbook and curriculum resources? And then we also identified some, some buckets within the curriculum frameworks that we wanted to learn more about, how are other districts addressing those?
Yeah, those were the ones that really stood out to us as things we needed to work on, and things that we had, we had done a good job on, but still felt like we had some areas that we could improve upon. And like I said, some of those are just new, new to the world, so we had to address those as well. So that's really what jumped off from us. It was good, like Stephanie said, it was really great to see what other districts were doing. It seems like a lot of people are in a very similar boat, basically talking to our colleagues in other districts. A lot of people are being hit with these frameworks at the same time, and again, I felt really positive about where we're at currently as far as being ahead of the curve from most of the people that we spoke to. In addition, you know, when you're looking at new textbooks, you know, we've used the Glencoe-McGraw-Hill books for a long time, and we've enjoyed them, we've liked them, but let's hear about what other people are using, so we can at least make a comparison and not just blindly, you know, go into the same curriculum we've done forever. I mean, we don't strictly teach from textbooks. I mean, I would say that it's not even, you know, maybe it's not even half of what we're doing, and a lot of it's locally created. You know, our staff has brought so many different experiences from different districts before they got here, that we've had some great curriculum time over the summer to mend all, meld all our ideas together and create a really special curriculum that I think is really beneficial. Probably should have said that before I moved that slide in a second, but as part of our review of our textbooks, we did go and see a bunch of different, you know, a bunch of different companies. We, you know, some of us were on Zoom calls with the salespeople to get their best sales pitch. We used the survey data, like I said, to identify some of those companies, and then we went from there and, you know, met, got, got in detail, we got some free samples that we were able to go through and look at, what we liked better, the usability. There was a push for maybe some digital, you know, get everything online, but that the cost was just so much higher. It was, we're talking probably 10 times higher than getting an actual textbook. And we felt like for the amount that we're using, which we are, you know, we didn't think that we needed to really sell our whole program into this digital platform where we already have teams, we already have this thing that we're working with kids on. We did like having a book that aligned to the frameworks and we ended up, we ended up staying with Glencoe as our recommendation. However, one of the things that really stood out was they have specifically gone like we did, line by line in their curriculum, and they have units and lessons set up for every single standard right down all the way on a chart that you can sit here. You know, if you're struggling with this one, you don't know where to go from here, here's three or four options that you can use for this topic. You know, some teachers are graded, you know, everyone's not graded the same thing. So maybe you need that extra guidance and, and they've done a really nice job of organizing that for us. And that was attractive to all of our health teachers when we went through the process. So at this time, you know, we do have some recommendations that have come out of our experience. Each, each of the different levels, each of the different levels has some recommendations and we did have some inequity inclusion as well. And each of our teachers that have come here today are going to speak about their specific level and the recommendations. So Elise and Mike are going to take the elementary.
All right. As for elementary, I believe we mentioned this earlier on, but allocating dedicated time within the students' class schedules for health topics, just because we see them twice a cycle, 40 minutes. So it's hard to find designated time to teach those health concepts within when they should be moving. Establishing an elementary PLC for wellness to facilitate collaboration among teachers, again, just being on the same page with curriculum and just bouncing ideas off of each other. Exploring initiatives like Senior Project to strengthen our community, get some more visitors in to the elementary level. Some more summer curriculum work as well, again, being on the same page, organizing all of our elementary curriculum materials. And like I stated earlier as well, addition of a jump-off event at the Barrow School, similar to those at Igoe and Taylor.
And what we're also looking at is this year, we added Second Step, a social competency program. It's tier one and that's taught by the classroom teachers. And what that has allowed us to do is to have sort of, once again, opportunities to discuss these topics with children that don't always fall into the 40-minute blocks when they have wellness. It aligns very nicely with, across the three elementary schools, the BIT. Each day, we want our schools to be safe. We talk about safe bodies and safe hearts. We want them to be joyful and we want them to be engaging. And we sort of realize that when we talk about that with our students, we really need to support the teachers as well to be able to have them understand. Elise and I actually had an, an opportunity earlier this year in the fall where I received the phone call from a parent in the fourth grade just had their BMI conducted. And it was a parent and she came home and she said, you know, my son was worried about a classmate because they were at the lunch table and they were talking about their, their weights and his friend, she pushed away a cookie that was in front of her because she was worried about how much she weighed. And it broke our heart and it really gave us a chance to talk about body image. It's something that wasn't in our plan curriculum, but to be able to talk to the children, especially that was involved in the parents as well. So we look at these opportunities really just to be able to, to strengthen what we already have in place and really to look at the second step. And then another thing is the safe touch lessons down at the elementary level on child sexual abuse prevention. That had, is in need of an update. That's been several years since we've initiated that, so we're looking to revisit it. It originally started in second grade where all second graders can participate. There was an opt-out clause for families that don't want to. But we also added lessons in kindergarten and fourth grade. So that's something that the team will work on this summer and will implement next year.
And so at the middle school level, our recommendations, first summer curriculum work to update and just address some of our units, maybe create some new ones as well in the subjects of gender, sexual orientation, healthy relationships, vaping and digital literacy. As we talked about before, like our textbooks are a little bit older and out of date, so like vaping is more prevalent now, whereas like our textbooks talk more about tobacco and like e-cigarettes. So I think that would be really helpful. So again, purchasing implementation of the new Glencoe Teen Health textbooks. We'd also like to incorporate some lead-up games in our fifth and sixth grade classes, just kind of getting them a little more ready for some more strategy-based games when they get into seventh and eighth grade. Also enhancing really the student engagement and opportunities for differentiation. Also addressing class size concerns. We have a few classes, a few periods a day where we have really just a lot of kids for a certain space. So if we're all down in the gyms and doing phys ed on those days and there's no classroom seats or it's raining, right, it's kind of a lot of kids on one space. And we're looking at, we tried a little bit of a co-teaching model this year and kind of just breaking up by skill so kids have more fun, they can be more competitive, they can also be more relaxed and it's more enjoyable for them. So the class size concerns would certainly help with that. And to consider scheduling adjustments, resource allocation, just to help alleviate that classroom space and constraints during that time.
We've really tried to expand the differentiation within the program as far as within the classroom and not having leveled classes, but giving opportunities for people to be in a beginner or an advanced group. And then we found that we've had really great success with that. So, you know, if, for example, you know, I use the flag, I'll use the flag football unit as an example. If you, if you don't know what a first down is, we're not going to throw you into a game of football, just running around and playing football. There are groups of kids that can do that. We can get right into a game, we can start tournaments and it's very competitive and you want to be in a competitive group. There are those students that exist that want to just go at it, keep score, know whose the records are, who's playing who in the playoffs type of thing. And then those kids that we're trying to, like we said, you know, maybe you'll be able to watch the game on Thanksgiving with your family when you're over there and understand the rules and understand what the yellow line on the screen means and understand how to throw and catch a football. It's an awkward ball, maybe it's something different that you've thrown before, understand the terminology and build from there. Whereas, and, and then again, when you do get to those small-sided games later, they're enjoyed by, you know, not being maybe not, not trampled, but you know, I mean, there's, there's like a different intensity about a person that's really getting after it and being competitive and someone who's learning that doesn't need to have, that doesn't mix on the same field. And it's really great to be able to break them up and the smiles and the enjoyment coming out of the beginner group is really something that we've taken a lot of pride in. So we're looking to expand that into the middle school even further as, as one of our big recommendations.
And then as far as high school health goes, obviously, we've, we've talked a lot already about the Glencoe Health textbook and how it aligns nicely with this, with the frameworks. But I think CJ makes a good point that a lot of these topics are things that we didn't grow up with and things that weren't necessarily relevant or didn't exist, maybe even when we were in school learning to become a health teacher. So even if we're not directly using the textbook with the students in the lesson, it still gives you, as a teacher, it gives you a really nice starting point, a really nice jump-off point to read what the textbook has to say, read some of their suggestions for lessons and at least use that as a starting point. I think that's really beneficial for the students. Some summer curriculum work, some, some areas of our curriculum where we realized that there were some gaps. First of all, our nutrition education, we realized needs to be a little bit more asset-based. So in other words, our nutrition units in high school have mostly been focused on what not to eat. And upon doing some research and reflection, we realized we're really not doing a great job telling kids what to eat. So, so taking it on the other side obviously has, has great benefits. So, so digging into that a little bit and then also, again, digital literacy, online safety. So much of a teenager's life now is spent on the internet and on smartphones and we've sadly, over time, come to the conclusion and accepted that they're not going anywhere and that's just the reality. And instead of fighting it, we have to embrace it and we have to learn how to work with it and live with it because they're not going anywhere. So teaching kids how to be safe in that world, again, a world that we didn't grow up in, is, is something that we, we want, we, we're really striving to make it a priority and striving to be, become great at because again, it's not going anywhere. So instead of trying to eliminate it, we have to try to work with it and help them through that. And then again, the vaping has, is something that has become a big issue as well. So just, just updating those units to make sure that we're staying relevant, staying with the time to reflect those current student experiences. And then the last one would be collaborating with some of the great community partners and resources that exist. I think it's always great that there's so many great resources out there, there's so many different perspectives you can bring in. And I think sometimes just a different voice is beneficial for the students. CJ and I were joking about it last week, we brought in like an Army Fit group to do a day with our PE classes. And they came in and they were having the kids do all these different workouts and exercises and we're laughing with each other like, if we were asking them to do this right now, they, they wouldn't want to do it, you know? Because after nine to 10 months of hearing our voice, they've had enough. But some, someone different comes in and next thing you know, they're flying around the gym, doing all this stuff and they're happy to do it just because it's a different voice, you know? And I think sometimes there's something to be said for that, that fresh perspective.
I think the Hawaiian shirt might add something.
Well, there were, yes, true. There were some great prizes, they were also motivated by the Hawaiian shirts, but never hurts to have that incentive. But I think just continuing to collaborate with all the great community resources and local resources is also becoming a priority for us as well.
And one of those resources we recently had at the Barrow, we brought in Dr. Rich from Mass General Hospital to talk. He's called the Mediatristian, I self-dubbed the Mediatristian, but he wrote a book about self, safe use of cell phones and, and we're trying to get more exposure, that's through the Wellness Committee, not the, not the Wellness Department, but the Wellness Committee. So that is something you'll hear about probably next month, so I'll hold off on that maybe. But just bringing him in to talk about how parents can help raise their kids in this world. Again, like John said, a lot of us grew up without them. You know, I didn't have a phone until I was 22 years old, so it's hard to experience and to teach children what it's like to use that through high school and, and do it in a safe, in a safe way that's not going to distract from their learning as well, so. Finally, an equity inclusion, we've mentioned, you know, trying to expand our adaptive physical education program to the middle school. I have not, you know, we have some meetings set up with the special ed department right now to work out the logistics of how that will fit into the day. We had an idea of putting something during the B Core at the Ahearn as a time where Mr. Foley actually has volunteered to be the, the teacher for that class, so he'll do a great job. Also, we've talked about more school-wide events, as much as we have a good amount now. We feel like, we really do feel like a lot of our events, you know, kind of define a lot of the experiences that all these kids have at Foxborough High School and throughout, and, and throughout their time in Foxborough. The jump-off is something that, when I go and watch the jump-off and, you know, Mrs. Portamani got me right out there in, in the jump-off, doing it with the students, but the intensity and the excitement with those kids for that day is so special. The Dance Around the World event is just, the, the energy in the room is, is special and it's something the kids will remember rather than a day-to-day activity. So something that really stands out. And then the standards-based grading, we've already addressed, so that was something we want to really hit on. So we do have timelines, go to Elise.
All right. Our proposed timeline and budget for our health, elementary health curriculum, this is a three-year process and all of the recommendations that we shared with you can be achieved through the regular curriculum review budget.
So we, I mean, yeah, Scott.
So as well as the middle school, our plan is to work with the existing budget, support program changes over the next three years aligned to the recommendations and the standards.
At the high school level, we wanted year one to try to get, get ourselves that new textbook, get into that summer curriculum work to revise those units. Year two, hopefully start to work with some of those different community partners and then year three would be just obviously assess how things are going and make any adjustments as needed at that point.
They're all very similar. We do want to try to get that adaptive physical education program in, we're actually hoping for sooner than 2025, 2026, we're hoping for next school year. That's kind of the goal here. It's just a matter of getting it in the schedule and having a workout. If not, the absolute latest we'd want to get in there is between the 25, 26 school year. But really getting together with professional development, time together to go, to kind of dig into these topics a little bit more and really put these lessons down on paper as well, or digital paper and someplace where anyone can access them and, and utilize them if we were to have, you know, a long-term substitution, they could walk right in and be smoothed right into the next lesson. I think that's something that's really important to us. And then we'll assess as the years go on. But other than that, we're ready to take some questions. Sorry to, it's so long-winded.
Thank you so much for your thoughtfulness on everything and the presentation was amazing. And I really don't have any questions, I just want to thank you because I know how much work went into this, I could tell from the presentation. Anyone else?
Yes. So I know there's action requested this evening. Just for clarification, the action is approval of the purchase of new textbook for both the middle school and new textbooks for the high school? That's, and that's the only action that we're, is there additional action that we're actually?
Correct. So it's the approval of updating the textbook. So, so what CJ's team has selected is, is updating the existing textbook to a newer version that's aligned to the new frameworks.
Okay. So just for the language, you want to say update rather than purchase of new?
Correct. Correct. And then in addition to that, there are updates to the standards-based report card language at the elementary level. However, the middle school standards-based report card, we've asked, we've, we've asked to come back. Principal Frazier will be presenting a final reflection on where we are with standards-based report cards at our next meeting and asking for the school committee's vote to adopt standards-based report cards in, in grade five. And we could include the wellness standards-based report cards in that vote as well in, in June.
Thank you. That was question number one. Question number two, I heard a couple of times in your presentation, so one, thank you. Very thorough, always appreciate the, the formality of this process that everybody goes through, right? We often neglect, particularly in our community, that there actually is a lot of science behind this and there's a lot of data. And when we get presentations like this, it reminds all of us that there is science, there is data and all the work that you do is based on that data. So thank you very much for all of that and certainly thank you, Dr. Burrows, for your partnership with this team in making all this happen. So, but I did hear a couple of times in the presentation, a couple of references to out our reviews. So my question is, is what is, first question is, what is the cycle, what is the review cycle for this curriculum?
It's a six-year curriculum review cycle. So although this curriculum in particular, we delayed it, it's been longer than six years for this particular department because we were waiting for that updated comprehensive health and physical education framework to come from the state. And there were rumors for the past few years that it was finally going to be updated. So we, we ended up getting lucky with this fall and having the curriculum review on cycle for this fall, we ended up timing things just right.
Right. Thank you for that. So question to consider is, based on all the things that you said, we know this changes, we know that because of the, the speed in which things evolve now, is a six-year review appropriate or do we need to look at it at a, at a more frequent, ah, that was good, more frequent, can't do it, to review this more often? That might be safer. But again, based on what you guys said, you know, tech, even between six years ago and now, technology, you know, gender issues, all those things have changed dramatically in how we talk about them, does it make sense? So I'll, I'll stop and let y'all comment on that.
Do you want me to go?
Sure. One of the things that we have with the six-year cycle is we have what we call the bump year that's in there. So if something comes up earlier and we need to address something, we have that within that cycle. But I would say what's more important is because of the summer curriculum work that's done every single summer, nothing waits six years. It is looked at annually. They look through their own grade level content with CJ being the K-12 Wellness Department head, they have their monthly meetings together. So they're looking at content, they're looking at the latest, I mean, even data that we have that comes in through like our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey, any of those pieces of information because it changes all the time. So the full thorough review and more so from a budgetary standpoint, when we look at that six-year review, we need to space it out from a budget standpoint. But it's, it's not ignored for six years by any means.
Right. And I'm sorry, I did not, I was not trying to say that it was ignored at all. That's not why.
Not your word, my, I'm just, I'm just trying to say that they're consciously looking at it all the time and I think like, you know, CJ sits on the Wellness Committee with me too. That's topics that happen there monthly as well. So it, it's definitely, we know health and education has changed a lot, to your point, so it is a topic of conversation.
Right. So thank you for that. So following on to that, this process, we know that the textbook updating is included in our regular budget. You guys were, thank you for reminding all of us of that, that this is not additional, this was planned spend for this year. So thank you for that. But we did talk about potentially in the 2025, 2026 school year, expansion of the adaptive physical education access. And then you also talked about ideally wanting to start that this year versus the following school year. So opportunities like that, that do have potentially additional cost, are we making sure, I, I think I know the answer to this, are we making sure that we are accommodating opportunity to look at adopting those technologies sooner or those practices or assets, whatever the right word is, sooner if they make the most sense for our curriculum?
I would say from a budget standpoint on something like the adapted physical education class, we would do that within our existing staff and FTEs. It's a matter of looking at the schedules, like for instance, we have itinerant staff that come from the high school, they come down to the elementary or come to the middle school. school. So we would have to do that within our existing F T Es.
Okay. Thank you. And I really appreciate you following my thread of thought there because I had, I got lost myself. So thank you for following us. And then finally, I, for me, at least for now, I should have started with this. The whole idea that there's a journey of wellness, right? And the whole standards base and all that stuff, I really appreciate how much that's coming out in all of this, right? It is not elementary, middle school, high school. There's a journey and there's an expectation that everybody is successful in different ways and that we're seeing that across, you know, the, the district, very importantly. But I really appreciate that that also came through very loudly, very clearly in this review as well. So thank you all very much. And I'm done for now.
I'd like to just kind of springboard off something that you said with that, just sitting with, in our D E I committee, our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee today. One of the elementary teachers, which was talked about with second step, now that tier one is within the elementary classroom teachers under them, the comment was that it has worked out really well with them doing those lessons because they can take that language throughout the rest of their day. And so that was what we had hoped, but to hear that, it, it just organically came up in the conversation. So it's taking the health and wellness piece and it's looking at social emotional learning as well. And then it's coming up within those lessons, but then it is permeating throughout the rest of their day.
Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate your comprehensive, comprehensive view to wellness and your ability to apply it to everyday things such as the cookie incident, that you're staying on top of things that are relevant to our community and our schools. And I did have a quick question. When you mentioned that the sophomores are C P I certified, that's a certification in-house, an in-house certification or is it an actual?
It's through the American Heart Association.
It is actually through, okay. Again, I must applaud you for that because I think CPR is very important to know and the biggest stumbling block is the time it takes to learn that. And you, you've now removed that stumbling block for, for the students. Do they have the option to take it, the option to opt out?
So, so basically the CPR is the other option to be certified. They, they all experience the curriculum and then if they want to get their card, they would then pay an additional fee, a very small amount.
Okay. Because I have a sophomore who has not said one word about it. So my, my feeling is he must have opted out and just said nothing.
They have just started, that's their last, we usually end that, so John can speak.
Because he's made no mention of it.
They just started late last week.
But again, I think that is a fantastic opportunity and that is the, one of the biggest, there have actually been articles written in scientific journals that have stated that that has been the biggest stumbling block. So I don't think people understand how huge that is that you offer that. So that is great. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
I want to echo the sentiments of the other committee members in just saying my profound thanks for going through this process. It's done it before, it's robust. I'm sorry you guys had to wait since, you know, I know you've been on it all along. Mr. Gibbs, I appreciated your explanation of just, you know, looking at the gap analysis because you all have been revising your curriculum as you go on. Because so many departments like yours for years have just kind of thrown up, been like, okay, well, I guess we'll review our own without, you know, being told by the state. So I appreciate your professionalism with that. Also for, I'm going to say something that you all know, but, and all the other teachers in the building, for people who aren't in the buildings and aren't very close to education, it's this department that actually drives so much of what we want our kids to grow up to be. And when you, when, when you go through N I S C and you do the profile of the graduate, you got to talk to a wellness teacher. When guidance is tasked with coming up with an advisory system, what are we going to do during advisory that's not just homeroom or, you know, you talk to the P E department because they're the ones driving it. And it's so much more and so much deeper than most of us grew up with. And so I just want to applaud your professionalism and for making each of your buildings better and the district better and our kids' lives better through what you do. So, and that's evident in the, the way the curriculum is structured, it's evident in your approach to standards based grading, it's evident into the goals that you want to infuse and the way you looked at resources. So thank you all so much.
And Jesus, sorry. None of us come onto the fact that this is the first time we've seen Mike in a meeting without a tie. So.
A little air conditioning at times.
So are we doing three separate motions or two separate motions?
I think she said just the one.
So is it, well, because one's for standards base.
Two, it should be two separate motions, one to update elementary standards based report cards and then the second to update the textbook at the middle and the high school.
That's what I thought. So thank you.
But they don't have the standards for the report cards. You're waiting till June to have that motion.
For the middle school.
From middle school.
Okay. Elementary's ready to go.
Right.
Yes. Middle school is also ready to go. I just think it makes more sense to, to group everything together.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine.
So motion to update the elementary report card language to standards based, I'm screwing it up, to standards based language for the 2024, beginning of the 2024, 2025 school year.
For P E and wellness.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Try.
You're all right.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's four zero zero. And?
Motion to approve the purchase of, nope, not, is it on to purchase pill?
Update.
To update the wellness curriculum textbook for the middle and high school wellness curriculum. Let's just say wellness twice to make sure it's covered.
They, those should be separate as far as they're two different texts.
Okay. So now we want three motions. Perfect. So motion to update the middle school wellness textbook to the, as, as recommended this evening. Say it that way.
Second. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four zero zero on that one too. Now number three.
Okay. Motion to update the high school wellness textbooks to the curriculum, or the updated textbooks as presented this evening.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is four zero zero as well. Thank you. That was a tongue twister. Thank you all so much for all your work. No, it's not stopping after tonight, so we appreciate it.
And we also have our wellness, our other wellness staff that are here this evening.
Yes, thank you so much. And P S, you guys both talked about devices. You got your textbooks, no devices needed. That's a happy, that's a happy accident too.
Thank you.
There you go. Or maybe it isn't an accident. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. All right. So we're just going to move on to community updates. We'll start with Mr. Canfield.
Nothing.
Nothing. Ms. Daxton?
Okay. Um, I just, yes, thank you. I just wanted to remind people, again, oh, we had finished C P A C for this year. C P A C is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. But I just wanted to point out that we did a workshop with the Federation for Children with Special Needs, which provides information, support and assistance to parents, caregivers and professionals of children with disabilities. They did a workshop on the new I E P form, but what was interesting about it was it wasn't just on the new I E P form, it was how a parent should fill out the new portion of the I E P form. Because the I E P form is going to be more focused more on the student and the student information. So they had like separate workshops with things like, you know, modifications versus accommodations, student voice, data collection, how to set effective goals and how to make an, an effective student parent concern statement. Again, if you ever see a workshop like that come up and you have a student on I E P, I highly recommend that you attend this workshop because I think this, this workshop was excellent. Also, C P A C has done, had some fantastic workshops this year. We did a, we did one just in March, I mean, in May, the Parent Academy, Fostering Positive Mental Health in Youth with Dr. Larry Epstein. That is something that I think we all need to be aware of. That is, even though it is, you know, sponsored by Special Education, the C P A C, I think it's something for everybody to attend. And so please don't allow, think that just because it's sponsored by Special, the C P A C that it is only for a subset of students. It is for everybody. Back in April, we also had Sarah Ward come in and talk about executive function. And again, that is something for everybody. So please, when you see something sponsored by the C P A C, take a look at it because it may be something for everybody. We are not just focusing on, you know, a small subset of students. This is for everybody. This is for our whole community. And, and the one last thing is I did attend the Special Olympics and thank you to Teresa Petty. She did an amazing job. It was fantastic, especially with the addition of the Norton students. It was fantastic. So again, thank you very much for what you did for this year. It was amazing.[1698.66]